Technical difficulty, there we go. Like to call the meeting to Harner, second time. Roll call of Alderman.
Alderman, Consilla.
Here.
Alderman Hazel. Alderman Pousa.
Here.
Alderman Duco.
She's on her way.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ferguson. Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Dittelman. Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Steele. Alderman Rothweiler.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Weigant. Alderman Wigginton.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Okay, Alderman Steele is excused, he's out of town. Alderman Ferguson called today, he's working late. And Carmen Duco told me she would try to be here by 5:30, she was coming from work. And Ed Dittelman told me he was gonna be here, so maybe he'll be coming in.
What about Joe?
Uh, Joe, I've not heard from either.
And Weigant.
And Weigant, to my knowledge, they both said they were gonna be here when I talked to him on Friday. So we'll see, they might have forgot because it's a special meeting, but I didn't talk to either one of those people today. So we have a quorum, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. We have a quorum, and um, the only Alderman I, I mean, only department heads I asked to be here were Chief Clay and Jamie Matrit, and Scott of course, uh, and then we have our clerk and treasurer present. So ladies and gentlemen, if you would please join me, if you're able, stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, is there anyone this evening in the public, from the, from the audience, would like to speak about this agenda? Sir, would you like to speak? Please come up to the microphone, please. And if you state your name and, and uh, tell us what's on your mind.
My name is David Rasher. I'm a resident of Belleville, I live in Lake Forest area. Uh, I'm here, I understand this is a special meeting to discuss or vote on legalized marijuana for recreational purposes, and that's what I'm here to talk about. I'd like to express my vote, uh, or desire for a no on that. There are several reasons, more than even a several. I've lived in Belleville long enough to know that some years ago, pawn shops were starting to open up all around town. And uh, what do you know, all of a sudden, the city decided they didn't want pawn shops. And so, I don't believe there are any pawn shops. I think the reason given was that they draw their own kinda element, and the city didn't really want that. A few years later, tattoo parlors were opening up. These are all legitimate businesses in a free country, but the city decided too many top tattoo parlors can draw their own element of people. So now it's limited to, I don't know, one, two, three, I don't know how many are in town. But I'd like you to be consistent. Marijuana has been illegal, now they wanna make it legal mainly for the money part. It will also draw the same kinda people. I wanna ask you, Mayor, has anybody gone to Colorado and spoken to some mayors of towns the size of Belleville and seen how legalized marijuana has fared out there? From what I read, they're making a lot of money maybe, but they got some real problems. So, that's uh, the main thrust of my meeting here. And uh, there was one other item I wanted to bring up, law enforcement. How will they enforce it? There's no way to test a person.
Okay.
What about the employers? They got people coming in stoned, they let them go, how do they, how do they manage this? I'm asking you not to be all enthralled about this potential dollars. That shouldn't be what's at stake here, we got young children, we've got our friends, neighbors, we have enough problems without adding another one. So, I thank you for your time.
We appreciate your comments, okay sir?
Okay.
Alrighty. Okay, is there anyone else under public participation? Hearing none, I'm gonna close public participation. And we have no um, minutes this evening, we have no oral reports or committee things. So at this time, I'm going to, should I ask for a motion first to put on discussion, or you wanna go ahead and uh, you wanna give any explanation? So I, first of all, I guess I'd ask, under six A, I'd ask for a motion to amend chapter thirty-four under taxation by adding section thirty-four point zero four seven, municipal cannabis retailers occupation tax. Uh, is someone, you're willing to make that motion? Do I hear a motion willing to second that motion? Second by Alderman Schaefer. Please note that our Alderman Duco got here as I said she would. She said she'd be just a couple minutes late. Uh, we have a motion and a second. I think before I open up discussion, I'm gonna ask city attorney Harner to give some explanation of, part of the reason for them, for us calling the special meeting tonight is, there has been a little bit, and maybe still, a little bit of, I don't wanna say confusion, but uncertainty maybe. If the October first date, that was, you know, this deadline for being able to state you want the tax or not, um, when I went to IML two weeks ago, they talked about it quite a bit, and they were still pushing, recommending that we would do this by October first, get it, get it to, get it to Springfield tomorrow. And um, so, I talked to Garrett, and we tried to get some clarity, but in, in absence of total clarity, we thought maybe we should do this, thinking and knowing that there's probably some fails, some things under the veto session that are gonna have to be probably tweaked a little bit on this, and I'll let Garrett, but let me just, let me say one thing, and I, I think Mr. Rasher knows this, cause he, he hit on it, but the decision about legalizing marijuana has been made by the state of Illinois. So there's no question, and we're not making that decision. Uh, they're gonna be able to use it in Belleville, we can't forbid that, correct Garrett? It's gonna be allowed to be here, it's just, the only question tonight is being discussed is if the opportunity came along and somebody chose to consider a distribution center here, would we dare, and we still have to deal with zoning on top of this yet, but would we want to submit our tax statement, our tax consideration, so that if somebody was looking, they, you know, they could consider Belleville? Uh, I'll let Garrett go into more detail about the whole procedure, and then Chief Clay's here, and he might wanna address a couple comments as well, uh, because we've talked about this long and hard.
Before I get into the timing of what brought this issue here tonight, I wanted to provide some background information, I know that, that the clerk has distributed some information that we discussed at the ordinance and legal committee, and um, the first is the memo that, that I provided, as the mayor indicated, it is correct, that this is the state's regulation of the use and possession of recreational marijuana. So, beginning January first of twenty twenty, uh, for those who are twenty-one years of age, um, purchasing, obtaining, possessing, consuming, using, or transporting a legal amount of marijuana is, for recreational purposes, is decriminalized. And it's, and it's allowed by the state. And the purchaser must have a government issued ID, but they're allowed to use and possess it within the confines of the act, here and everywhere in the state of Illinois. The possession itself, it's, it's thirty grams of raw cannabis, and then cannabis infused products that go more than five hundred milligrams of THC, and there, or five grams of cannabis product in concentrated form. That's what Illinois residents recreationally are allowed to possess, and then non-residents are allowed to possess half of that amount, here in Illinois. Now, the uh, with respect to the use of it, you're, they're allowed to, to use it in their home, um, or, and they're allowed to use it beyond their home, wherever the municipality or the county in an incorporated area would allow that. So we know that they're able to possess it, and they're able to use it in their home, and that's something that you can't further restrict. With respect to the state's further regulation, they have enacted laws that are very similar to how they handle alcohol with respect to underage possession, false identification, driving under the influence of cannabis, and the state is putting together a cannabis task force to examine and create best practices, and come up with the technology to utilize in order to detect, similar to what they do with alcohol as far as operating a motor vehicle. Now, what can the munis, what can the municipality regulate? You can regulate the use as long as it doesn't conflict with the state. So you have the ability, but obviously it's, it's up to you with how you would enact ordinances to uh, determine where else, if any, you would allow the use. And those places would not be considered public places as defined in the act, but again, that's you, you determine it. If you did nothing beyond what this, what the act provides, then it would be, remain limited to the home, as far as the use. With respect to cannabis business establishments, and that's, this is a separate thing, that you have the ability to regulate, to disallow altogether, to allow by virtue of specific number, to zone, is a cannabis business establishment, is the cultivation, where it's, where it would be grown, the uh, the dispensaries, where it's sold, and you can limit or restrict those business establishments, or prohibit them within your jurisdictions. So, uh, or you could provide civil penalties, if you wanted to have them, you'd provide civil penalties that would govern time, place, and manner, and with zoning, you still have that same ability, if you remember when we were here, previously, we handled adult uses, and they were zoned, restricted, and they were limited in time, place, through zoning, through manner. The only difference here is, you have the ability to prohibit it altogether under the act. Now, um, that brings us to the, if you were going to permit a cannabis business establishment such as the dispensary, simile, the recreate, or the medical dispensaries, there's one locally in Sojai, there's one in Collinsville. They have the ability under this act to make those recreational and add another recreational location, you know, somewhere else, but within the, the uh...
State police district.
Uh, Illinois State Police District, so, that's the first things, that's, those are the first cannabis businesses you're gonna see that would be able to start January first or shortly thereafter. So, what does that mean from a, and this brings us why we're here today, from a tax standpoint? Local government revenue, for instance, in, in addition to any increase in jobs or things of that nature associated with the business, would be, the state sales tax applies to cannabis businesses of which you get one percent. The unit of local government is allowed to impose a tax up to three percent of the purchase price of sales tax, and the county can impose an additional point seven five percent on a municipally located cannabis business establishment, or a, or a three point seven five percent if it's located in unincorporated areas. And also attached were a section of the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act that talks about the local ordinances that you could pass, I know that Jenny has distributed that, and the section fifty-eight dash eleven dash twenty-two of the municipal code, which is the municipal cannabis retailers occupation tax law. If you look at fifty-eight dash eleven dash twenty-two, it provides a window for the effectiveness of a municipal tax if you pass it. And that window is, if it's filed by June first, then it can, that it takes effect on September first, and that's the only window. If you recall when we did the regular sales tax, there's two windows in that statute that are passed and filed with the DOR, the Department of Revenue, by April first, it can take effect July first, passed and filed by October first, it could take effect January first. Well, in, in this particular case, not only is this section different in the window, but it's also was different in that the law was not enacted by the governor until June twenty-fifth. So, the window had passed for, for this year, and so, the way it's currently written, if you file it anytime between the time that the law was enacted and now, or going forward to June first of twenty twenty, the tax cannot be collected until September first of twenty twenty. Obviously, the act goes into effect January first of twenty twenty. So right now, there's an eight-month lag between the effectiveness of, of, if you so permit, the effectiveness of a cannabis business establishment and your ability to tax it. So it's anticipated, but it's unknown how, but it's anticipated that there will be an amendment to clear that up. There was an email that was also provided, I believe to you, that where I inquired of IML, what they thought, the Illinois Municipal League had already provided some suggestion that they thought it would be amended to mirror the state sales tax. Well, the inherent problem with that is, if it were amended, it's going to do the same thing, it's going to pass, uh, it, it, that date will have passed by the time it's amended. So what, what the Illinois Municipal League is suggesting is that, is reflected in that memo, is that if you pass it and file it in the DOR by October first, then if the amendment says October first, then you could potentially collect that tax beginning on January first if you were to permit a cannabis business establishment. So these are all decisions that, that have to be discussed, and we discussed uh, uh, these issues with, generally, in the ordinance and legal committee, but if you, if you pass this ordinance this evening, that, obviously, there's still plenty to do, you have to determine, well, still have to determine whether you're gonna permit them between now and January first. If, obviously, if you decided not to permit them, then you would have to repeal this tax. But if you did permit them, you have, then you, between now and January first, you would have to determine how many, if you were gonna permit them. You're gonna have to make the zoning decisions about where one or more of what you permitted would be located, how would you restrict them in time, manner, and place, whether or not you would, and these are all independent decisions, whether or not you would allow a location where the use of it was permitted, they call them lounges, sometimes you see them adjacent to, or virtually attached to the dispensary. There are decisions that would have to be made with respect to, uh, independent of all, of the cannabis business establishment, whether or not you wanted to permit the use outside the home, you know, there's, there's some significant zoning and restriction decisions to be made, and there, the municipal league has put out, and I know it's, I believe it's been circulated, a couple of really good publications on this, one was a more recent follow-up with the cue, with the frequently asked question section, but uh, the reason this issue is here now is because there's a chance, according to the IML, that this, this is a some sort of, of believed deadline, potential deadline, to being able to collect on, collect the tax if you allowed a cannabis business establishment on January first, twenty twenty, and of course, a lot of things would have to happen between now and then.
So, okay, you're with firsthand, and we'll go next couple.
Okay. Uh, so it's, the only place that it can be sold in Belleville is if we get a distribution center?
Right.
In other words, it's not gonna be sold, gas stations?
No, that's a myth, that's a myth.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a, there's a, a common misperception statewide, that this will be dispensed like cigarettes, it'll be available in, in convenience stores and that, and you know, this is, this is probably, will have, will end up being the most regulated business in the state of Illinois, probably even more so than gaming, or any of that, because of the nature of it. The uh, dispensaries are, have significant security, there's significant restrictions on who is even allowed to go back there, same thing with the cultivation centers. They're relative, you know, the, the medical ones are relatively nondescript, I don't know if you've driven in Sojai, or near the frontage road of Collinsville where they're at, or, there's one in Springfield, that's Catty Corner from the Abraham Lincoln Museum and Library, uh, but they're all, it, it's, it's really heavily regulated, and it's not gonna be sold at any convenience store, or smoke shops, or otherwise, you have to be licensed by the state as a dispensary.
The mayor of Collinsville spoke to a group of mayors recently, they have a medical, and he says, you're, he said, he told the mayors, they're welcome to come up, he tried to give them a, a tour, but he said they're like Fort Knox. He said, you're not gonna, he said that perception of that you're gonna be able to buy it at a convenience store is, is not the case, it's highly controlled, highly, you know, so once again, couple, when I talk to some of you just about tonight's meeting, you know, the state's made the decision to, to allow the, the use of it, okay, January first. There's, as Garrett said, there's gonna be two, there's gonna be so many, only so many licenses, a limited number of licenses in each state police district, we're in District eleven. So, chances of us getting one site may not even happen. When they talk about limiting the number, the chances of anybody getting more than two sites would probably be next to impossible, really. Is that probably a pretty true statement, I believe. It's gonna be very difficult that you'd have a second site, probably.
Are you talking about within a city?
Within a city, at least the city of our size or smaller.
Right.
Okay? A city of Chicago's gonna have more.
I think there, the, the ones that are able to apply and, and open on January first are the one, are the entities that already have a medical.
Medical.
License, because they've already been through the, the regulation aspect of it.
The background.
Going forward, if you look in the act, it's tiered as to the timing of when you can get future ones, but uh, um, and again, i- if you were going to permit a business establishment, you can, you could limit the number to one, if you allow one to one, you could, uh, some entity, some municipalities are considering, if they wanted to try it, they were gonna li, limit it to one, and then, you know, and then reevaluate after they have one, if, so, you, you control whether they're here, and if you allow them, you control the number, where they're located, uh, you know, those normal zoning, time, place, and manner, the special use permits, that type of thing.
One of the questions when I called, called around to tell you about the meeting, one of the questions was, in other words, if we don't allow them, but hypothetically Swansea does, they can still buy in Swansea and use it in Belleville? And I said, yeah, that's the law. You'll still be able to buy it, if they have a dispensary in Fairview Heights, or Swansea, or unincorporated, they could still buy it there, they would get the tax, and then you could still use it in Belleville, we can't stop that. So all the concerns that are raised about that are still the same concerns here. Um, and, and Chief, I don't know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but you and I and staff and Garrett, we've had some conversations about this. Um, I mean, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, you know, a lot of it, you know, the same way as the, the police officers make, you know, if there's excessive use of cannabis, it's not much different than with the police department if they find a, an inebriated person. You know, there's, I don't know, Chief, do you have something you wanna say, and then I'll go to the next question?
Oh no, I mean, it's, it, it's, it's a state law, so there's, it doesn't really matter about the borders and how we look at it, we're gonna treat it like we would treat it as, 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 as the law tells us to. So nothing is really, it's not germane, it's, it's not specific to your location, but you guys are deciding really is not a, a matter for law enforcement, it's, it's just, it's a tax, it's a tax matter, you just gotta think about how you wanna go about it.
Raffi's first, then Roger, then Kent.
I have a couple of questions. How far away from school are they gonna be?
There, there's limitations on that, right Garrett?
There's limitations by law, and then you can, you can further regulate that, you know, that's a zoning issue. But there are limitations, and I believe, are fifteen hundred feet under the law, now if you wanted to, you know, when it comes to cannabis business establishments, you have a significant amount of authority to regulate them, because it's up to and including prohibiting them altogether. So, if fifteen hundred was an adequate, uh, uh, feet, then you could look at different distances, you just can't go less than it.
Yeah.
All right, and then my second question is, going back to the chief, if the police basically finds someone inebriated with cannabis in them, what's gonna be the fine? Is it gonna be similar to somebody that basically loses their license under the influence of alcohol?
Well, it, it, it's, it's, it's a civil, if it, if, even if it was, if it's a matter, it would be a civil ticket like we have right now. So if you're out right now, and we catch you with a certain amount of cannabis now, without this new law in effect, it's just, it's a civil penalty, and, and then I, the expungement pretty much wipes that off the plate within about a year, or, and for some, six months. So, we, we deal with it in, in a practical way with the limited resources that we have, we, we don't put a lot to it because the community, the state is saying, this is how we're going. So we would treat it no more different than we would if somebody was intoxicated, there are, we have laws on the books right now that says you can't be intoxicated, but when we start talking about cannabis, and whether you high and so forth, right now, our ordinances don't address that. That is something down the line that, you know, that I, I know everybody's gonna struggle with, is how do we go about that? How do we deal with it?
You are empowered under the act to, to uh, address that by civil penalty within your ordinances, but the, the state is already addressing it as if it were driving under the influence of alcohol. They have the, the underage laws and the DUI laws that are gonna apply to, to this, similar to, to how alcohol is handled, but by that same token, you have the ability to enact ordinances that address that too, since that dual jurisdiction issue, and then it becomes an issue of whether the, uh, the police department writes the ticket under the state statute or the local ordinance.
Roger, you're next.
Okay, and that's right, okay. Um, a couple things, you know, this is kinda like a new world, you know, state law has mandated this, this new law, uh, there's a lot of us here of an age where we look back and saw marijuana was, was, what's the proper word, um, a horrible thing, or whatever the case, maybe that's not the right word, but uh, I think with the advent of medical marijuana, it's, it's changed a lot of views and outlooks. A couple of questions, in a dispensary, can they sell medical and, and, um, and recreational in one dispensary, or are they separate dispensaries?
You would have to be licensed as both, and that's not what we're talking about, this is non-medical, this is recreational, now the, the meta, under the law, the existing medical becomes a, both.
Yeah, so what, what we're going, and to simplify this, what we're really voting on is, if somebody comes to town and wants to open up a recreational dispensary for marijuana, this is what we're, we're really simplifying this, that we would negotiate them, and like Garrett said, there's a lot of other hoops you have to jump through.
This is, this is.
But we're just, we're just starting the initial.
This is just, this is just a tax, so we get it on file.
Right.
And if we, you know, first they have to pass a lot of background stuff with the state, et cetera, but then we have to get zoning in place.
Right.
But this is just to meet the...
This, this is a tax ordinance that, the timing of which is at the recommendation of the Illinois Municipal League.
Yeah.
Because what there's, the way, the way the law's currently written, if, and, the way the law's currently written, no matter what, if you passed it now, or you passed it on May thirty- on May thirty-first, it would go into effect in September of 2020. But the, the thought of the Municipal League and others, we just don't know how, it's gonna be amended, but it's gonna, it's gonna have to be, or there'll be a period of time that the existing ones like Collinsville, under the current law, they wouldn't be able to tax it for nine, for eight months.
Yeah. Is there any idea...
And so, it's gonna change, we just don't know how, but this is, this is the, the view of the Municipal League on how it's gonna change.
Go ahead, Roger.
Okay, if this, if this ordinance passes, my question is, the revenue generated from the taxes, where's that money gonna be spent at?
Well, we have, we're not determining that at this point, 'cause we, we don't even know how much it would generate.
Well, that, that's gonna make a determination on how I vote. If, if it goes towards the police department, then it's fine.
Um...
For law enforcement.
I mean, I, I think that that can be determined at some point, you know, but I think it's, it's hard to, it's hard to say that all of it's gonna go to one place when, at this point in time, we have no idea what it's gonna do, and we have no idea by the time it would ever get started at, what time, if it ever did get started, what other, what other things hit us that could, could be, um, a determining factor from the budget that would already be coming. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think, I think it's too premature to make that decision yet.
Well, that's an interesting point that he brings up. Would, um, you know, if this passes and we started moving forward with these things, would the council be able to weigh in, uh, and give their opinion on where some of this tax money, I mean, could we say, hey, look, a third goes here, a third goes here, a third goes here? Uh, are we, will we be able to be involved in the discussion?
You're, you're involved every year at the budget time.
Right.
I mean, first, I mean, by the time we have a budget, and it might be two years before we'd ever have a dispensary hypothetically, and even see what some of the neighboring people our size, what it was generating, then you could sit down and say during your budgeting process...
Right.
We want so much of this to go towards this, these, these particular causes, but like I said...
Which is certainly fair enough.
But during the budgeting process, you can do that.
Right.
But right now, all I'm saying is, we, we don't even, you know, there's so many other hoops, as Garrett said. We have to first get zoning, we have to get other, some other stipulation, and they would have to be, first of all, they'd have to get a license here and pass all the qualifications and the application and background, et cetera. I mean, this is not gonna happen overnight. But, but because the IML is just saying, this is an early step, if you're, if you're, unless you're definitely gonna turn it down, you know, and say no...
Well, I think from a timing standpoint, there's work to be done, but the re, the timing of this is if you anticipate that you could have one, that would open before September one of 2020.
Yeah.
Based on IML's suggestion...
Be ready.
Then be ready for it from a tax standpoint, and, and really from a, uh, the council controls where it would go, like, through the budget process.
Yeah, Kent's next.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think that, you know, the train is already heading downhill on this thing, but there are a couple of things that I just need to get clarification on, and Chief, I'm gonna ask you your indulgence as well. It would seem that the state is still in conflict with federal law, aren't they, Mayor?
Well, I think just like all the other states, there are issues, uh, as far as how that conflicts, but it hasn't impeded these businesses and the other, I think, eleven states. It becomes a banking issue.
But a lot of that has to do with how the DOJ has approached it, correct?
Uh, thus, as far as, as far as their own enforcement, correct.
DOJ versus Trump and, uh, Mr. Barr right now. So, I don't know that we have any clear indication of what direction that, uh, and, you know, but with that, Chief, how would our law enforcement interact with federal agencies that are trying to enforce federal law?
The, the federal, you know, there's a federal system, so there's supremacy of the federal system in their spirit of things and, and their state. We're required as state offices to follow state law, we're also required to, uh, follow federal law. So, if we have a situation where it's something is legal here, as a law enforcement agency, we have to abide by that. We're, we're state offices. If the federal folks decide that they're not going to abide by that, and they're gonna do what they do on a federal level, then you'll see that. You know, that issue has come up in, in some of the other states and so forth, but, and you are correct in, 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 in that DOJ has not really pushed that. They did do some of the things as far as banking laws and so forth, but with the medical marijuana, they have started to back off on that, where they used, didn't allow them to, you know, use the banking industry and so forth. So, you're even seeing some softening on the federal side of it, but it is still a, you know, a scheduled drug from, from the federal standpoint. But there is no conflict that we would have as far as a state officer, 'cause we, we're obligated to follow state law.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Garrett, I wanna go back to zoning for just a second. From what I've read, these were supposed to be in industrial, light industrial areas, the dispensaries?
That, that's a determination to be made by you.
By us, so...
Yes.
I thought that I was reading in terms of the states.
No, it's ki- commonly, that's where they, they put them, but it's, it's really ultimately gonna be up to you. Like, for instance, in Springfield, it's downtown, but in, in, uh, in Sojai and Collinsville, for instance, it's on the frontage roads. They look like office buildings, but you're gonna determine where that's permitted.
Well, from my point of view, I would say that I would like to see it downtown Belleville.
No, I think your chances of getting, of, of getting one, it, the closer it is to a high-traffic highway is usually, uh, where they've been locating. And, uh, again, you determine that, but from a zoning standpoint...
If that's empty buildings, that would be able to accommodate that as well.
And I would zone it, I would recommend that you, that you, wherever you just determine it to be appropriate from a zoning district, that you make it a special use, so you have that type of, uh, independent look at, at each...
Site.
Each selected location or proposed location.
I appreciate y'all, y'all bearing with me as I look through some of that stuff, but as I understand it, the only purpose of us being here is to decide whether or not we want to pass a, a tax, and whether it will be 3% or 2.75%?
Yeah, uh, twenty, uh, point two-five percent increments, up to 3%.
Well, then, I would make a motion that we go ahead and do it at 3%.
I think that motion's on the floor with a...
The first motion, yeah, it was in the motion of Mr. Consilla.
Was it at 3%?
Yeah, it was, if you read the...
The draft, the draft is at 3%.
The draft said 3% to take it to the maximum. So, we had that motion that was seconded by...
Shelley.
Shelley made a second, yes. So, we have that motion. Other further discussion or questions? Alderman, Consilla.
Now, the county has a right to tax too, but do they tax it if it's in our municipality?
They can, it's just, it's just a different level. If it's in an unincorporated area, the county, a non-home rule, uh, county can tax up to 3.75%, but if it's in, located in a, in an incorporated area, they tax 0.75% on top of yours, which in this case, if you approved it at three, it would be the 3.75% tax combined.
Yes, sir.
I just have one final question. Who gets the distribute, the license for the distribution center? Is this a political football, or is it scrutinized?
It's a...
Or...
Well, it, it's heavily scrutinized, but it's a, this is a state-regulated license. Um, I believe that it's the, uh, Department of Ag is involved in it. I know that they're involved in the cultivation portion of it, but these are state licenses. It's similar to, to video gaming, you know, they have to, the, the state regulates this, the state handles the, the application process and the award of the licenses.
Yes, sir.
Call for the vote, please, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, we have a second for six A, and I read the motion, six A one, and that motion was, uh, made by Alderman and Consilla, seconded by Alderman and Schaefer. If there's no further discussion on the first motion here, on this motion coming from administration, I'd call for a roll call vote.
Consilla?
Aye.
Aye. Pusa?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Oveen?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Ralph Wyler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggintin?
Aye.
Barfield?
No.
Motion carries, I think we got, what, how many we got here tonight? Twelve? So, it was eleven to one? Eleven to one. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Ordinance Number eighty-three seventy-five. Do I hear that motion? Alderman, Anthony, seconded by, uh, Randall. We have a motion to read by title only, Ordinance seventy, I'm sorry, eighty-three seventy-five. All in favor of reading that motion by title? I'm sorry. Huh? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It got amended. So, it's eighty-three seventy-six. Uh, you both agree with that? Change that motion to eighty-three seventy-six, read by title only. All in favor, that motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ordinance eighty-three seventy-six, twenty nineteen, and ordinance in many chapter thirty-four taxation of the revised co-ordinances of Belleville, Illinois, as amended by adding section thirty-one point zero four seven, the municipal cannabis retailer occupation tax.
Do I hear a motion approving eighty-three seventy-six? Motion by Anthony, seconded by Randall. Any discussion on eighty-three seventy-six? Roll call.
Pusa?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Oveen?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Ralph Wyler?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggintin?
Aye.
Barfield?
No.
Consilla?
Aye. Motion carries, eleven to one. Um, that's all the business we have. We'll keep you informed on this. Like I said, there's a lot of decisions to be made yet, but this would at least allow us to get it up to Springfield, and at some point in time, if this date ever becomes an issue for us, we would be in place. I thought maybe when I went to IML, I would hear some news about how they've changed all this, but it's still kinda hanging there until the veto session, however they might amend, uh, the action at par the state. Hearing nothing else, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Motion by Elmore, who is the second, by Carmen Duco. All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.